Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, April the 15th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, April 1st, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is approval of claims. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $164,988.70. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the wastewater claims dated April 15th, 2019, in the amount of $164,988.70.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. We have no new business this evening. Comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have nothing.
No comments. I'll ask for motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM, and we will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety within the next five minutes. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, April the 15th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, April 1st, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have a comment, please. Dan, I know I've asked on a few occasions to have minutes that included a little bit more detail, and I think at this point, we're just not going to get it. But whenever we have something that we reject, or that we have a change, or we decide not to vote on, I would like to have a little, the reason why. And I'm referring to Page 2, under Phase 1 Stormwater Recommendation for Westler. Where it says Sandy Seward moved to reject the bid. I think it's, the public needs to know why we rejected that bid. So if we can have some detail on that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes dated Monday, April 1st, 2019, as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. We have no unfinished business, oh, excuse me, approval of claims. This evening, Board, we have 25 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $573,200.57. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the corporate claims dated April the 15th, 2019, in the amount of $573,200.57.
Make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. Tonight, under new business, we have several items. The first is a continuation from last meeting concerning the airpack lease and surplus equipment. Tonight, we want to approve a lease agreement with the Wayne Township Fire Department. Chief, did you want to comment on it?
The contract was sent to the City Attorney with Craig. You had a chance to read it, make sure everything was okay.
And this, this does what for us?
This will allow our firefighters to conduct training at the Wayne Township training facility, be able to utilize the tower facility, their burn chambers, the flashover chamber, be able to continue our WPEs in the spring. It's no save, actually won't save us money because we don't have the money to spend. But the whole package is about $24,000 in training opportunities for the fire department.
And I think that last meeting, you brought up the fact that when we give the airpacks the surplus and give them to Wayne Township, there was a issue of liability or...
Right.
Yeah, I forget what you called.
What was the term I used? I forget now.
I forget what, what was that term? I can't remember.
I know what you're talking about.
They just, the liability.
Join several.
Yeah. So that's, and that's in here, so...
Yes, that is correct.
The floor is open for any questions.
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to allow the fire department to enter to an agreement with Wayne Township for the Emergency Services Education Center.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Chief, you could sign this, and when all the signatures are in, can the clerk get out a copy for our records?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business is permission for outdoor seating, Rustic Root Tea Room.
Sure.
My name is Tammy Hannah, and I'm the owner of Rustic Root Tea Room located at 626 Main Street. I am seeking permission to have outdoor seating outside of my business. I will work with the fire inspector to make sure that pedestrians have plenty of room to walk down the sidewalk unobstructed. Upon approval of my request, I will provide a certificate of insurance, naming the City of Beech Grove as the additional insured. Thank you. If you have any further questions, respectfully, Tammy Hannah, owner.
Any questions or comments? They just want to do some outdoor seating, so... If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the request.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Master Vendor License Promoters Club. The Promoters Club is going to put on several events this year, and they've applied for master vendor's license, and it has been sent to the police department, and the chief has signed off on it. So this is something they do each year as a civic group, so any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll approve, ask for approval of the motion to approve the master vendor's license for the Promoters Club.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries. Next order of business is permission for Oktoberfest, Holy Name Church. And Dan, if you could read this into the record, please.
Dear Beech Grove Board of Works and Safety, on behalf of Holy Name of Jesus Catholic Church and the Oktoberfest Committee, we would like to request permission and assistance from the City of Beech Grove regarding the following areas for our annual Oktoberfest that will be held on October 4th and 5th, 2019. Closure of 16th Avenue between Albany Street, North End to Main Street, South End, including barricades from street traffic beginning Friday, October 4th at 1:00 PM through Sunday, October the 6th. This closure timeframe includes setup and teardown and time of the event. Assistance with providing trash totes and recycled totes along with trash pickup from the city. Use of the picnic tables from the Parks Department. Temporary sewer line connection and hookup for use of the portable restroom facilities on-site. Placement of promotional banners and assistance from the city in placement of these banners that will be provided by Holy Name. As been done in previous years, we will notify all surrounding neighbors of this event to apprise them of all aspects of the event, and will include notification of the street closure. The Holy Name Oktoberfest is a community event that will be open to the public and the entire Beech Grove community. We encourage our community to participate in this weekend devoted to fun, devoted to food, fun, health, and safety and entertainment. The City of Beech Grove continues to be a part of this tradition of neighborhood and spirit and celebration. We appreciate the assistance from the city and Board of Works in making this event a success for Holy Name. Thank you for your help and consideration, Terry Galuska.
Any questions or comments? This is the same as we've been the past six years, so...
The only thing that wasn't stated in there is proof of insurance and naming the city as additional insured.
Can you follow up on that, Craig?
Sure.
Yeah.
What were they giving you in the past, Dan? Just a certificate?
Certificate, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, no questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the request from Holy Name for, to conduct the Oktoberfest.
Make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up, permission to host Cars RS Car Show Promoters Club. Dan?
The Promoters Club would like to request permission from the city...
Wait a second, that's the wrong one.
Board members, the Promoters Club would like to request permission from the city to co-sponsor a car show on Main Street. We will co-sponsor with the community group of Cars RS. We request to hold this event on Sunday, September 29th, 2019. Street closings requested will be Main Street from 2nd Avenue to 9th Avenue, and 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th Avenues from Main to the alleys, both the north and south sides. Time scheduled will be from 7:00 AM till 5:00 PM. This will be a total static display. Once vehicles are parked, they will not be moved until they leave the show. There will be no motorized activities. The only moving vehicles will be golf cars. A proper certificate of insurance will be provided to the city from the Promoters Club. As with all our events, we greatly need any and appreciate assistance and cooperation from both police and fire. Respectfully, John Sorrelli.
As, as in the past, this is something that they do each year. So any questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for motion to approve the request from the Promoters Club to host the Cars RS Car Show.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next order of business is permission to host fireworks, the Promoters Club.
Board members, the Promoters Club would again like to request the city permission to host our annual fireworks display. The request is to have it once again at Saratoga Bolton Park on Tuesday, July 3rd, 2019. The request that the Promoters Club have exclusive right to the park on that day, so we may determine what vendors are allowed at the event. We plan our booths and craft booths set up through the park. There will be a DJ with live music and other festivities. In cooperation with the Parks Department this year, there will be no parking allowed in the park on any grass areas. All pavement parking will be reserved for handicap and public service vehicles. At approximately 10:00 PM, we will have the fireworks display conducted by Circle City Pyrotechnics. The display will last approximately 30 minutes, and all festivities will conclude after that. In past years, we have had excellent cooperation and assistance from police and fire and Parks Departments. We look forward to that cooperation again this year. Circle City Pyrotechnics and Beech Grove Promoters Club will furnish the city with current certificates of insurance prior to the event. Respectfully, John Sorrelli.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Now, I'll ask for motion to approve the request from the Promoters Club to hold their annual fireworks display in the city park.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. Next up, permission to host Fall Festival and Parade with the Promoters Club. Dan?
Board members, the Beech Grove Promoters Club requests permission to present two of our annual events, the Fall Festival and the Festival Parade on the streets of the city. The festival dates will be Wednesday, September 11th through Saturday, September 14th, was set up to be Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. The street closings we are requesting are Tuesday, Main Street from 3rd to 7th Avenues, and 4th, 5th, and 6th Avenues from Main Street to the alleys, both north and south, from 5:00 PM until setup is complete. Main Street will be open to traffic during business hours. However, 4th and 5th will be permanently closed. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the above-listed streets from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Saturday, the above-listed streets from noon until 1:00 PM. In addition, Main Street between 2nd and 3rd Avenues from noon until 6:00 PM, and Main Street from 6th and 7th Avenues from 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM. For the parade, we request Main Street from 17th to 8th Avenues for the parade route, starting at noon, and Main Street from 17th to 25th Avenues for the parade lineup, starting at 10:00 AM. In addition, during the duration of the festival and setup, Tuesday through Sunday, we request permission to use the public parking area located north of the alley at 6th Avenue and Main Street behind the Gishwiler Senior Center. We also request permission to draw electrical power from the meter that is already in place, and to draw water from the Senior Citizens Center. The Promoters Club will pay for all water and electric used during this time. The carnival rides will again be contracted to Poor Jack Amusements, and proper certificates of insurance will be provided prior to setup. In past years, we have experienced excellent support from the police, fire, and street Departments, and looking forward to that relationship again this year. Respectfully, John Sorrelli.
Questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the request from the Promoters Club to host the annual Fall Festival, the Fall Festival Parade, and use the parking lot behind the Elton Gishwiler Senior Center for staging, for the amusement people, and any related item to the Fall Festival.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board. The next order of business is a request for street closure, Moose Lodge.
Beech Grove City Town Hall. I am writing on behalf of Beech Grove Moose Lodge 1883, located at 3320 South Emerson, Beech Grove, Indiana, 46107. Beech Grove Moose Riders would like to have an event on May 18, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which would require a few streets blocked off for the safety of our guests. This event would be a car, bike, and truck show, which will include food, vendors, and events for the kids as well. The Moose Lodge would like to request Belle Fontaine from Emerson blocked off, as well as the alley off Churchman and 2nd Street, off of Churchman. Going south on Emerson, making a right turn on Belle Fontaine entrance blocked off. South on Emerson, turning right on Churchman. The first alley entrance, or if we can block off, only behind the liquor store from there to Belle Fontaine. And also the entrance from Churchman to 2nd Street, and the four-way intersection of 2nd, Belle Fontaine. I understand this is a residential area, and I have spoken with a few homeowners to accommodate their need to leave or come, and not pose any issues for them during the event. I would like to thank the City of Beech Grove in advance. The Beech Grove Moose Lodge requests this last year, but the weather was not on our side that day, so we are wanting to have this event this year. Please let me know if you need any additional information from the Beech Grove Moose Lodge to accommodate this request. We thank you for your time in this matter. Penny Bray.
So they're wanting to block off Belle Fountain from Emerson to 2nd Street, and then the alleys both ways. Is that how I read it, Dan?
That's the way I read it.
Okay. That's just what they did last year. Any questions or comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the request from the Moose Lodge to block Belle Fountain from Emerson to 2nd, and the alleys both north and south of Belle Fountain, so they conduct a event on May 18th.
One comment on that. Before we vote, we need insurance from them, listing the City of Beech Grove as additional insured.
Okay. All right.
And I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. The next order of business is a request for street closure for Speedway Indoor Carding. Anyone to read that one?
Sure.
Dear Board, we are working with the Mayor's Office, Whiteland Raceway, and the Southern Indiana Racing Association to conduct a go-kart race on Sunday, June 16th, 2019, at the Beech Grove High School parking lot. This one-day event has been titled the Beech Grove Grand Prix, and will have approximately 150 to 200 go-kart entries, ages 4 to 75, and bring over 3,000 visitors to our city. We respectfully ask that Butler Avenue be closed just north of Adelaide at 3:00 PM on Saturday, June 15th, and remain closed until June 16th, when the event concludes and the crowd has left. We also ask that Hornet Avenue be closed east of the entrance to Beech Grove Metal Apartments at 3:00 PM on Saturday, June 15th, and remain closed until June 16th, when the event concludes and the crowd has left. We will provide all necessary certificate of insurance paperwork required, naming the City of Beech Grove and the Beech Grove City Schools as additionally insured. Please contact me should you have any questions. Respectfully submitted, Andy O'Gare.
And there's a map on Page 2 of the, of the track, the course. The schools already approved this event, so what we're doing is just going to approve and them to close two roads. And then they'll provide all liability, they have to have a certain type of liability insurance for this event, so they'll provide that to us. So any questions or comments?
That was my question. It was like they wanted permission from the city, but did they have permission from the high school?
Yeah, they've already...
Craig, I do have one question, and I'm not sure what the answer is, but let's say one of their drivers that is in this event would get hurt. Even though we've got additional insured, do we have anything from them stating that they will not hold the city?
Can I answer that? They have to sign a release.
Okay, good. That's all I was curious.
Each infant has to sign a release.
Okay. That answers my question.
Plus, if you're in the pits, you have to sign a release as well.
I have a question. It starts at 3:00 PM, but it doesn't really say when it's closing down that Saturday. It's not going to go on all night, is it?
No, it, it says, they're going, they want, they request to close the road at 3:00 PM on Saturday, June 15th.
Right.
And it won't be back open until the event concludes on June 16th. The event will, will last from about 8:00 to 4:00.
Okay.
And then, the reason they, for closure on Saturday is they have to set the course up.
Oh, so it's, okay, I'm with you now.
So having said that, motion to approve the, approve the request to close Adelaide and Hornet Avenue for the Beech Grove Grand Prix.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thank you. One last item, Board, and it's actually, it's two things. The first is Music on Main with the Chamber. They filed a master vendor request, which has been turned over to the police, so that is part of this package. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the master vendor request from the Beech Grove Chamber
I'll make said motion.
And I will second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Now, they request for street closure to conduct Music on Main, so I'll defer to the clerk to read it into the record.
Dear Mayor Buckley and City of Beech Grove, the Greater Beech Grove Chamber of Commerce is requesting permission to host a family-friendly concert called Music on Main on Saturday, August 24, 2019. This event will run from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, and would require the closing of Main Street between 2nd and 5th Avenues from approximately 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. This should allow enough time for stage setup, tear down, and cleanup. Please let me know if there's any additional information you need regarding the event or details. The Greater Beech Grove Chamber of Commerce looks forward to hosting our fourth annual Music on Main event, and appreciates your support. Sincerely, Renee Harler.
And the last item on their packet is their certificate of liability insurance, naming the city as additional insured.
I did just a question off the top of my head. So when we require liability insurance on events like this, is there a minimum or a maximum that, insurance that we require the folks to have?
It's a million dollars.
It's always a million, just flat across the board.
That's what it's been previously. I mean, if council thought that was too low, we could always ask to increase that at some point, but I don't know of anything we went higher than a million, do you know?
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, now, is alcohol going to be served during this event?
I think...
Normally, the Eagles, I think, has done it in the past.
They moved it down to 4th Street, or the 3rd Street for Beach Bank Brewing.
Okay.
And I think, one of the rules is they have to keep it on their...
Premises.
Yes. We'll find out.
Yeah, that would be the only other thing, you know, where you may not want them walking up and down the street with it with kids, because it says it's family-friendly.
That's a good question. Any other?
They have the professional wrestling again?
No, that's Fall Festival.
Oh, that's Fall Festival, oh. I thought that was Main Street. All right.
No. Um, any further questions or comments? I'll ask for motion to approve the request from the Chamber to host Music on Main Street, August 24th.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes the new business. Comments from board members?
I have none.
I have none.
Comments? I'll ask for motion to approve the meeting, or to conclude the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:29 PM. We will convene our special council meeting this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
How many septic hall orders we had? Which one was this septic?
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will call to order a special common council meeting for Monday, April the 15th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman-at-Large.
Jim Brooks, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Trezor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Mascari, Council, District 2.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
And, Council...
Your honor, yeah, I was going to say, Kevin Day is not feeling well this evening, so he won't be here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next order of business is public comments. I'll defer to our City Attorney for instructions. Craig?
Sure. So we got several signed up tonight, folks, so let's, let's keep it to three minutes, and then we're only going to hear comments on the RFP only. So the first will be Dave Grenoble. So the first will be Dave Grenoble.
Good evening, Council. My name's Dave Grenoble, and I live at one fifteen South Twelfth Avenue in Beach Grove, Indiana. I'm going to apologize seating, I will be moving around the back of the room. I went to the knee doctor today, and they worked me over pretty good, so I'm a little stiff and sore. I've come to you a couple of times, asking you guys to stop this before it goes any farther, and I'm not sure what your feelings are. We haven't gotten a vote on it yet. The one thing I want to remind you all of is that Mr. Bertrand has said on more than one occasion in the last four months, that it's we, the people, that own the sewers. And I'm asking you that before you make any final decision, that you make a motion to put it on the fall ballot, because we, the people, deserve a right to whether we think you should sell the sewers or not sell our sewers. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Pam?
My name is Pam Stalard. I live at seven eleven Churchman Beach Grove. What I have to say is very similar to what Mr. Grenoble had to say. This is not the mayor's sewer, this is not the council's sewer, it's the people's sewer. I also can't believe it's gotten this far without the people knowing more about what's going on. It's their sewer to sell if they choose to sell it, and this should be voted on by the people, not by the mayor and by the council. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolfloch? Don't want to speak? Mr. Hag?
I think they just signed in.
Did they?
Oh, they just signed in.
Kathleen?
Hey, Craig.
Hi, this is my first study meeting with you guys. I'm Kathleen. I just graduated Beach Grove High School a few years ago. I don't know what's going on with the sewer at all. I know I'd like to use it, but I also understand that it is not ours personally to own, maybe the line hookup is. I just want to learn more about it, so I'm here. Thanks.
That's good. Thank you, Kathleen.
April?
I'm April McManus. I live at seven twenty-five South Fourth. I often drag her to public meetings to learn how they work. My only question, and it's not necessarily a question exactly, but just to you, the council, I read a lot on Facebook, like everybody does, and I read a lot on the city page, but I've not really seen anything that talks about how we're going to replace this income. So if we sell the sewer, and that's a one-time payment, and you do some projects, when three or four years down the road, you don't have that replacement income, I'm very concerned about that. And I liken it a little bit to selling the toll road to pay for infrastructure upgrades, but after three or four years, that was gone, and here we are. So I would really like to ask you to all please consider that part, the replacement income, because we rely on those funds.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathleen. Thanks, April.
Suzie? Suzie McMillan? You don't speak, okay.
She's coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Springer. I live at two thirty-eight South Fifth. My concern is this kind of scene, I found out about this through people talking on Facebook. The sewer is part of the city, and the citizens deserve to be treated better than this. We vote you folks in, and you work for us, not for each other or not for the mayor, and we would like to a little more above board and know what's going on.
Can you tell us where you work?
I work for City Hall.
Okay, so you work in the Treasur's office?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Suzie McMillan, and just for the record, I'm the Clerk Treasur's wife. And so the information I passed out to all of you tonight has, first of all, in the back of it, it starts with, it has sewer repairs that have been done since two thousand and fifteen, up to two thousand and eighteen, and I've been through it time and time again. The biggest one I found was ninety-five thousand, and that was actually relining. Most of the repairs run under ten thousand dollars to the sewer. So somebody had said to me, well, I heard it could be three million dollars, and I'm like, hmm, I don't think so. But, so anyway, I wanted to comment on that. And then there's summary sheets there of how much the sewer brings in in income every year. And then this top sheet has how much the salaries are that come out of sewer. So for example, in two thousand and eighteen, we had six hundred and four thousand, seven hundred dollars come out in salaries and benefits to employees. And I keep hearing people complain about how much money sewer spends on ROI and on the, what's that thing called, Daniel? Pilot, thank you. And the thing of it is, that money goes to like pay for your public servants in the general fund. It does get transferred to the general fund, but it helps pay for things. And so, well, let me read my statement. I'll probably do better with that. So, okay, first of all, the DPW, the Department of Public Works, which consists of the people who take your, they consist of the people who take your sewer payments via liens, answer your calls with sewer issues, they respond to sewer issues, they pick up your trash, they pick up your leaves, they chip up your brush, they salt your streets, they plow your roads, they fill your potholes, and a host of other things to take care of this city. And so DPW consists of, there's only two funds that pay the workers that you see out on the streets that are doing all this stuff. It comes from the sewer, and it comes from a fund called MVH, and it's completely legal. It's the way the municipalities work. So everyone assumes that it's just the sewer business with this utility, and it's actually a utility business. There's stormwater, and there's trash in there also. And according to the mayor's financial advisor, eight percent of the income from the sewer, which the sewer brings in about two point eight, comes from trash. So that equates to approximately two hundred and forty thousand. So let's say we just sold the sewer portion of it. So how are we going to pay for those people that do the trash pickup and do all that stuff? There's about thirteen people that get paid out of the sewer department. And so then you have approximately seven or eight that are paid out of MVH. Well, since the state, since Daniel did the budget last fall, and the state decided in January that the MVH fund, which we get monthly distributions on that, and I included those in this packet I gave to them, we get about fifty thousand dollars. Well, they decided half of that is now got to go for capital improvements. So that leaves about three hundred thousand. That three hundred thousand will not cover MVH salaries and their benefits that they get, their taxes that the city has to pay. So I provided the council with all that stuff, and the point I'm trying to make is, without the sewer portion of the utility, we can't afford to keep our DPW. And I don't know how you guys think, or how anybody thinks, this council or anyone else, how are you going to make up that pilot payment and that ROI? For example, let me give you guys just an example. The mayor's budget this year is a hundred and five dollars and fourteen, a hundred and five thousand, fourteen dollars. Clerk's is one fifty-eight, one sixty-one, council's fifty-two, six fifty-nine. The community center's one fifty-five, three forty-six, senior center one thirty-three, oh-oh-one, parks two sixty-four, four twenty-six. It comes to eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand and six hundred and seven dollars. Those pilot payments come to about eight hundred and fifty thousand. So if people think that they're going to sell this sewer, and they're going to get a ton of money, and that's going to make the city survive for a long time, it's not, I can tell you. And I'm up here talking again because I did this several years ago. I went to the Indiana State House, the only time I've ever been there, and we didn't have this many people at that meeting, I can tell you. Mayor Buckley was fire chief at the time, and he wasn't against it. That was when we lost our dispatch. And so I applaud everybody for being here tonight and wanting to learn about this, but it's not good for the city. So another thing I want to say, if you think this company's going to take over our sewers, and they're not going to pay a CEO or CFO to run them, well, and not raise our rates, that's silly. My daughter, she lives in Indianapolis, I have her bill. Her bill's seventy-four ninety-seven a month, just for her sewer. She does not pay a stormwater, she's said possibly on her property taxes, but not on her bill. She does not pay a trash bill. She does get free trash pickup. She doesn't know, well, I just said that part. So already, they have spent over seventy-five thousand dollars pursuing this thing in consultant fees. You know, how many sewers could we have relined with seventy-five thousand dollars? So right now, the general fund, which pays the salaries for most of the city, is in the negative by almost thirty thousand dollars. Will it be in the positive by the end of June and by the end of December? Yes, it will be. But the point is, there is not all this money that people think there is, and just to spend it like crazy. We no longer have a tax anticipation warrant, because Daniel, the Clerk Treasur, my husband, was able to wean us from that. We were borrowing money in January, and I don't know if everybody understands this or not, so we got this tax anticipation warrant, and it would come in.
Six minutes is about up.
Okay, is it between Debbie and I?
Yeah, six minutes. Yep, you start at seven oh six.
Okay, thank you, Craig. I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So anyway, the tax anticipation warrant, which we would get in January, would be what we would choose to get through the year. So we were borrowing money off of our tax money before it ever came in, and we don't do that anymore. So the city of Beach Grove is financially stable, but if you all don't stop spending on consultants, we won't be. So please put your politics aside, do what is right for the good of all of us and not just a few. Sincerely, Suzie McMillan. I do hope you'll review all those papers I gave you, because those are actual facts. They're not stats, those are real numbers. They're not something that some consultant just came up with, they came out of the city's system. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak that has not signed up?
Mayor Wiley.
All right, Mr. Wiley.
Mayor Wiley?
Appreciate the opportunity to make a few comments here this evening in regard to the proposed selling of our sewer system. I had two or three different categories I wanted to talk about, and I'll talk about the one that's probably the least amount of time is going to be taken up in doing it, if I can find it. Let me try to make a comparison with you, if I could, please. Say, for example, you've got an automobile that's twenty, thirty years old, and got two hundred thousand miles on it, and every time you turn around, you're having to take it to the shop and have anywhere, and take your car to the shop today is not very inexpensive, as you probably know, but every time you turn around, you're going to have to take it to the shop to have it fixed. What would you do? Would you keep the car and continue? Would you put money into it, or would you trade it in? And I'll tell you something, if you haven't tried to trade a car in lately, or take it to a body shop to get it fixed, you're in for a shock. My son has some body work he needs to be done on his car. He took it to a body shop last week, the car is eight years old, they wouldn't even work on it. They say it's not worth, after eight years of even putting money into a car like that. So just food for thought, keep that in mind. You know, as far as the vote on the city council is concerned, for me, it's pretty simple. I think you probably have two choices. Maybe you've got others that I don't know anything about. If you do, that's fine. But you've got a choice of keeping the system that in some places, I think the mayor told me, there's like forty miles of sewers around through the city of Beach Grove, and keeping those in operation and pouring money into it hand over fist and not getting much out of it in return. Or you can put this system up for sale. Pardon my dry mouth, I've taken the medication to make my mouth dry, but I apologize for that.
One minute, Mr. Wiley.
One minute. Or the other choice would be to sell it, and I've heard people say, well, we're going to give another part of the city of Beach Grove away to Unigub. Well, Unigub doesn't have anything to do with this, as I understand, is that correct, Todd? So it's going to be bid out to a private company and sold, I guess, to the highest bidder. And that company, whoever it turns out to be, should have the money and the wherewithal to make the improvements in our city sewer system as need be, where the city of Beach Grove just, I'll be honest with you, I don't think has the money to do what needs to be done to our sewer system. So keep that in mind. If you don't do something with the system, as I said, while it goes fifty, seventy-five years old in some places, one of these days down the line, we're going to have a major collapse in the lines, and you're not going to be talking about a few thousand dollars, you're going to be talking about probably in the millions to replace a sewer system that caves in on you. Not to mention the chaos that would come from that when your basins start backing up with dirty, stinky sewer water. So I could go on, but I think you get the message. You've got two choices, keep it, continue pouring money, good money after bad, and not making much improvement, or sell it and be able to make major improvements, not to mention take the money that you're going to get from that and make major improvements around our city. You can't see a sewer that goes through the city of Beach Grove, but if you build, and we're in dire need of a new police and fire station in Beach Grove, there's need for streets and sidewalks to be improved, there's other improvements need to be proved, those you can see. So a lot of that money could be used for that purpose. With that, I'll shut up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Anybody else want to speak? Okay.
My name is Joe Hag, I live at one forty-five North Forest in Beach Grove. I've lived out here for sixty years, sixty big years. I've seen things deteriorate, I've seen some things that look pretty good. I've got a sidewalk that's been cracked up ever since I moved here. All I have to do is let the grass go around, nobody knows the difference. That's not the point. Point is, we're supposed to beautify this city, and we've done that with our main street is, it's beautiful, I love it. But again, I don't know whose idea it was about this sewer thing, but that's like pulling Harry's on you, but you don't know what's going to come up later. I know we've got some bad sewers in this place, but the ones we've got are pretty good so far. What I mean is, if I ask for a new sidewalk, I know I won't get it, but that's not the point. If you ask somebody to come out and put up a couple of three million dollars to get the sewer fixed on the back end, it sounds like a heck, just have to wait and let it come around like everything else does. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
My name is Tony Bauer, and I live at five oh seven Ash Street. I've lived in Beach Grove my whole life, except for when I left for the military, and then I came straight back home. And I have a lot of neighbors that are around me that don't have the internet, so they don't get to understand what's going on, and the only thing that they get to hear is through other people who've been reading on the internet. I think that this should be put onto the, for the election, for everyone to vote on. I also am a poll worker. I love it, I love giving back, and working the polls for every election, and I love seeing denoms on there for everyone to be able to vote and have their say read. It would also give us more time for those that don't have internet access to actually learn and. to actually learn and to become more aware of what you're asking the city to give up. Because for a lot of us, this is our city, and we would like to have a vote in this. Thank you.
I'd like to make, I'll go in.
Gary Hall, live at 238 South Sixth Avenue. Counsel, thank you for your time. Citizens, mayor. I had no plans on speaking, but it really touched me when young people stand up and have concerns. It's their future, guys, okay? How we manage, all the information that you guys have, Ms. McMillan just shared, we really need to focus on that. Just facts, just forthcoming with the facts. I know months ago, I had the pleasure of speaking with Todd, very professional, very to the point. He shared it was the citizens' utility, okay? Let's just do it honestly, again, before with coming with the facts. That's all I'm asking. One thing to understand when the mayor spoke, even if another third party buys it, in business, but you know this, in business, they're not going to do anything to it until it breaks. We're still going to have issues. If we own it and maintain it, and don't push things down the road, maintain it. Do the right thing first. If we maintain it, keep the integrity of the system, we, the citizens, will be better off. But just please, please, please be honest. That's all we're asking. Thanks for your time.
I'd like to make a statement. I just wanted people out here to know, we've already spent $75,000 on this. When you see people coming in here that cannot afford to pay their sewer bills, and you're wanting to waste money on something like this, it's horrible. Some of these people, they'll get a lien on their property because they cannot afford to pay their sewer bills. By owning this, at least in the last two years, we have not had rate increases. And someone else owns it, you can forget that. You're going to get a rate increase every year. We have not had a major catastrophe than anybody can tell me, and as far as I know in Beach Grove. We have problems just like everybody else. What would your streets be like if we wouldn't have paved these streets? They'd be horrible, and they'd be worse than Indianapolis. But we did regular maintenance, upkeep, paving, and we did it the right way. And that's what needs to be done with this sewer system. There was an email that came out from Citizens Energy that stated our sewers are not in that bad a shape. What that means, I do not know. That was two years ago. But anyway, I just wanted the citizens to know, there is an organized remonstrance against this. We've got approximately 100 signatures right now, and I think one person has walked their street, and that's it. So, there is, the citizens do not want this sold. In fact, I've never had one tell me they want it sold. So, you know, it belongs to you, the citizens. We work for you, the citizens, and it's time we start working for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go into new business, and the only order of business tonight is to go through the RFP that was prepared for you by Todd Bertrand. So, I'm going to turn it over to Todd. You guys should have received it about 10 days ago to review it and go through it, and then we'll go from there. Todd?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, members in the gallery. So, as Mayor Buckley has noted, you have been provided a copy of the request for proposal with the accompanying exhibits. I've reached out to each of you individually, making myself available for any questions you may have for their explanation. It is a 40-page document. The RFP itself is very prescriptive. I think there are portions of it on the city's website currently. It appeared, at least this afternoon when I checked, the exhibits are there and a cover page, but the bulk of the document, really the balance of the document, is not there. So, once that's put online, I think that will at least bring clarity to what this portion of the discovery is. There is no predisposed outcome. You are not going to take action tonight to sell or anything of that nature. I think the notion and motivation of tonight's public forum is for the RFP to be reviewed by this council and to be either approved or disapproved for public dissemination and then test the marketplace to see what other companies, what companies may be interested in bringing a solution. And I think former Mayor Buckley, or I'm sorry, Wiley, did note properly, you retain it or you decide to move forward once you receive these responses, if you decide to approve this request for proposal this evening and move forward. So, with that, I will take your questions. I don't know that if you want to go through each item, all 40 pages, it's entirely up to you and the accompanying exhibits, but I think it is, once it's posted online in its entirety, it will be for public consumption.
I made several notes. I'm going to start with the explanation the young lady was, they were talking about the loss of income. So, let's make it very clear that we've talked about a selection committee. We talked about a selection committee that the mayor would have with council members and other outside to decide to help view the monies, and the selection committee would help that concern about the offset of revenue as far as salaries and stuff, correct? We talked about having a selection committee that would go over both, I guess, as far as the budget.
So, the RFP does contemplate a selection committee comprised of mayoral and council appointments?
Yes.
To review the responses. As I have suggested in this podium before, it is not, it's not a foregone conclusion that there is a dependency of 1.3, which is very common, $1.3 million. It's been noted tonight, it's been noted several meetings prior since January. And so, my recommendation is to get either that particular committee or a different group of council members to, if you decide to sell the collection system, what would the alternatives or solutions be for that $1.3 million?
So, we've discussed that with this council about how to manage or handle that concern with those monies, those revenues that seem to be to offset or understand that money and how we could manage that within the sale.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to clarify one thing. That's up above 1.5 million at this time. So, just for accuracy.
We had it go up 200,000 since the last meeting.
It hasn't been since the last meeting, and it's been ongoing.
The number you put out there was 1.3, though, Dan.
Craig, I'm not going to argue with you. It's a million five. If you want to look at it, look at it. But don't interrupt me when I'm stating something. It's a million five.
Guys, can we not have a meeting where we just argue the entire time?
I do.
Dan, all I did was ask you a simple question.
I told him it's 1.5.
Okay, then it's done with.
So, a selection committee would get together and review and help, make, realize what that money is and where it is in other areas of the budget.
So, it's contemplated in this document for there to be a selection committee to review the responses. And then, if the council and the mayor so choose to have that and task that committee with that, discovering what those solutions could be, then yes.
And then, I have, I had a question where, will the city have the ability to request upgrade capital improvements? So, I've heard from citizens that we're going to sell this, they're going to make it, let it collapse, say what. But the whole idea of this, we will have a definite say-so and the ability to request and to demand upgrades and capital improvements in our system with the new partnership, correct?
So, I'll answer your question. On page seven.
Yes.
Section 2, .2, .1, 3. Capital improvements. Propposers should demonstrate in the response, one, intended capital improvement plan of the system, how it plans to coordinate with the city with respect to one or more capital improvement programs, and, three, continuous improvement of the system, and, four, economic development and growth of the city. So, what that is stating is, anybody that responds to this particular document, we're expecting them to, A, they should do their due diligence and come to us with a capital plan that this is what they will do to the system over time, and we accept or reject that.
Okay. And we'll have a say-so on what we demand them to do. We'll have a voice.
And during this negotiation phase, if it's known that there are certain areas of the city that needs greater attention than others, then we should certainly articulate that.
So, just the sale of it doesn't mean it's just going to get dumped off in hands, that we're not going to have any say-so and how the improvements will be made and what we're expecting of the improvements.
So, what you're expecting with this particular document, or is anybody that may be, any entity that may be interested in partnering with the city of Beach Grove with respect to owning these pipes, their response should be complete and meet every one of these criteria in this 40-page document. So, everything from community support to sustainability initiatives, miscellaneous items, their due diligence, I'll scroll back up, everything from minority and women veteran-owned businesses, how they planned on engaging those entities here locally, safety programs, customer service, reporting to this council and the mayor, emergency preparedness, capital improvements, as I noted, maintenance, sewer overflow, odor control, and I won't go on and on and on. But it's contained in this document, and once it's released, if you choose to release it tonight, those are the expectations by which entity should respond.
Okay. And then, help, explain to the public on the septic customers, the STEP program, what a benefit that would be, a possibility for septic customers to have an option.
So, one very important criteria is the STEP, septic tank elimination program that Mayor Buckley has required to be in this request for proposal. There is an exhibit in the document pack provided to me by Phil, are the entities that are not served by the wastewater system or the sewer system today. What we would like for proposers to do is describe to us what they will do to incentivize or encourage people to hook onto the system, and what are the economics of that? Is it, I don't know what those are. So, an example would be that the new owner, potential owner, would pay, I'm not committing anybody to anything, I'm just giving the example, pay for that lateral line connection. So, we're expecting new, or the companies, or the responders, I should say, to tell us what will they do to help get those particular properties onto the system, not a mandate, not a requirement, but noting that there are health department mandates as well. So, we want to have that conversation.
And this could be a great customer savings for those people with existing...
Potentially, very much so.
And then, explain to the community also about the customer lateral line, what this could do as far as the lateral line connections for people who have...
Folks, please.
So, the question is the lateral line. It's my understanding pursuant to Chapter 50 of your local code of ordinances, that the customer is responsible for any and all repairs from the house to the main connection, whether it's on the same side or opposite side of the street, inclusive of street repair, restoring it back to its original state. What we've put in here in this document, that the limits would be at the property line of the customer. So, if the main is on the opposite side of the street, that would, we would take your residents off the hook for anything beyond their property line or wherever the main connection might be.
Which they do not have at this time.
My understanding is that's exactly correct.
Correct? So, if there was an issue, it would be monies out of their pocket. Because when I just did canvassing last, on Friday night, and the gentleman said he had to pay $13,000 out of his own pocket for some issues. But with this kind of, this kind of language in our proposal could potentially save customers those kind of emergent dollars, correct?
Based on the language of this compared to your Chapter 50, it very well could be.
Okay.
Can you explain what pilot payment is?
Payment in lieu of taxes, so it's not even, it's not exclusive to this arrangement that has been noted about the wastewater system and that utility. It could be a non-for-profit business or organization that might come in, and you would enter into a payment in lieu of taxes. So, what would their property tax ordinarily be if they were a taxable entity? The city can negotiate on what that payment in lieu of, replacement of taxes. In your case, with the utility, which is very common across the state of Indiana, that is very common, that cities will pay themselves out of the utilities with those revenues generated to offset operational costs.
And then, explain to the community as well about how sometimes these proposals work with the community as far as they continue their partnership, not just after the sale. For grants, I read number 25 about community grants, and they remain true partnerships of our city to help us make improvements to other areas like...
Yeah, there would be, there is an expectation here within this, that the interested parties would have to demonstrate and articulate to you what will they do from a community support, maybe it's a philanthropic corporate responsibility into anything outside of the investment in the system, so local organizations and things of that nature. That's what that section is referring to.
So, the idea is to remain good partners with us, you know, even after the sale?
Yes, sure, indeed.
Todd, on page six, 2.2, 3 rates for severance. Can you go through that section?
So, that section is requiring any interested parties to demonstrate to the city what rates under their potential ownership would be over a, page six, you said? Over a five-year trajectory under proposers' ownership and operations. So, stated differently, we want them to come into you and say, if we owned it, this is what rates would be, understanding, which is an exhibit of the wholesale treatment agreement that you're required to pay now with CWA, or commonly referred to as Citizens. So, we want them to demonstrate to you and to your citizenry what rates would be over a five-year period if they owned it.
Yes, okay. So, this actually provides more clarity and rate structuring, because right now, everybody seems to just have this...
That's correct.
You know, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what the rates are going to be. But this would actually help give us clarity and better rate structuring and awareness for our citizens as far as what payments will be.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. And then, the question I had, Todd, and we talked about it on the phone, as far as, does this include equipment and owner, does this include sale of equipment or owned by the city? And you explained, so explain that to the, to the citizens that we're not selling anything else.
Correct. So, one of the exhibits is excluded assets. So, I asked Brad and Phil any assets that they need to retain that were otherwise paid for out of utility, and they provided that. So, that is an exhibit, I don't recall which exhibit it is, but it's an excluded asset. So, it's primarily, I think it's Brad here, primarily the trash collection and jet vehicle, or the jet pump vehicle. Outside of that, there are no vertical structures related to the system. There are no lift stations. There's no treatment facility. You have a gravity system, and so, it's essentially the network of pipes.
On page 13, Todd, 3.4, assuming liability. Is that, are you talking about our current debt?
So, we were going to have the conversation, if we move forward, I'm getting to that page, so page 13. Company will assume only the liabilities of the city related to the acquired assets other than excluded assets, including performance obligations under all assumed contracts. So, yes, any assumed debt is part of that, they would assume that debt as well. So, if you have debt outstanding, that's an exhibit here that we would have to defees or essentially pay that debt off. But any other obligations, contracts, that's a part, that's what 3.4 relates to.
What's our current debt on that bond for the sewer? Dan, do you know what that is?
No, not without researching.
Counsel, let me pull that up real quick. This is Exhibit 7. This is as of the 13th. If I could flip this around. This is work product by the... is work product by the Peters and Associates, there's a debt schedule. I'll show this to Dan real quick.
Okay, I think there's two of them out there, isn't there, at twenty fifteen?
See, this is the, I'm trying to read up. If this was.
That's the twenty oh four. That should be the twenty fifteen, yeah.
And like I say, I don't know these numbers without researching them, I'm looking at them secondhand.
So, Counsel, in that particular exhibit, I can just recite what's on this form. So we are in twenty nineteen, looks like a payment was made in January, principal and interest, I'll have to do some quick math on that, I'll, I'll do the math and get back to you, I have the whole amortization schedule.
Total debt service between the two bonds, I mean, I don't know if that's the number we need to come to, it looks like it's right over at three point four million, three point three million? So you have two point seven two two and six forty seven.
So that's the full balance when they were taken, when they were entered into.
We've already paid a lot of that.
So we've already paid a lot of that, so let's look at it again.
Todd, I have another question.
Yes, sir. Here's the, here's the amortization schedule.
Well, there's two of them, he was right.
Yeah.
Is it seven twenty-five, nine nine five?
Yeah, it would be about seven twenty-five.
Plus the three forty-four.
I think it's six hundred.
Yeah, principal and interest.
So about one point two.
Yeah.
One point two.
Principal and interest.
You wouldn't have to pay.
Well, if they're bonds, you have to pay, you have to defees it, because bond holders expect a certain return on that.
Well, they also.
Okay.
I have another question on outstanding debt, or outstanding bills that great mayors owe the city of Beech Grove.
Yeah.
How would that be answered?
So oftentimes, if there are accounts in arrears, a new owner, we would sell those accounts receivable, so we'd be made whole on those, and then the new owner would then pursue those outstanding balances. Any cash and monies on, earned by utility at the date of close would be retained by the city. You earn that, the, the utility earned that, so we wouldn't, that wouldn't be purchased by the new, the potential new owner. So any outstanding debt or accounts owed would be sold in addition to any purchase price.
Does that include liens on properties, because that is not held in Beech Grove, it's held at Marion County.
So that's a legal question, that since it's already in a court system, it's probably already being pursued, so it could be, those liens are sold as well, but I think I would defer to legal counsel for that, how it's treated.
That'd be part of the sale, that'd be explicit in the language. We're not, I mean, that money's not collected until people go to sell their property and they find out, hey, I don't own my property, then we get it. I don't like, I don't think it's necessarily accounts receivable.
Okay.
I found page nineteen interested as far, interesting as far as the minimum qualifications for proposals, and I, I, I think that's an interesting page nineteen, as far as the net worth. So the proposal must demonstrate that, the proposal must demonstrate that the proposer has a net worth of at least eighty million dollars as a financial stability and financial capa, capacity to the satisfaction of the city to acquire the system. So this language guarantees us that those proposers, you know, have the backing and they have the background to maintain and take care of our system.
Correct, you want, you want somebody that's got the financial strength and wherewithal.
Yes, and that's, I hope the public to know that all that, that information's in here from, and I believe the mayor was insisted on this information being in here.
Can you tell us how many in the state of Indiana would have that particular balance sheet of eighty million or more?
Certainly an Indiana American water would have that, an Aqua would have that, there are investor-owned utilities, or IOUs as they're called, I know Citizens, I don't know as of late, but Citizens Energy Group has a strong balance sheet. So those are the three major players in utilities in the state of Indiana. We also, in that section, if I may, Counsel, in that section seventeen, no default of breach, no bankruptcies, and we want them to provide references to us.
And then on, on page twenty-four, eighteen point two point four, the performance, I think I like the, the language in here, as you had mentioned about odor control, that as far as, as far as proposer approach, performance guarantees and regulatory requirements, including affluent quality, I mean, as far as, we've made sure that that language is in here, as far as the guarantee, as far as them qualities and regulations.
Correct. The unique thing about Beech Grove system is you do not do your own treatment, but we keep this language in here because we want to make sure that whatever flows out of Beech Grove is handled properly.
And that's for safety of our citizens is.
And the environment, the last thing we want is a, the federal government, and this is not fear mongering, this is just the reality of, of environmental management, we don't want the EPA coming knocking on our door.
You brought up a good point just then, if we would sell our sewer system, could they ever come back on us for any EPA? I mean, it's like the landfill, we used it fifty years ago as a dump, so they're coming back on us now.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a very good question. So if you get that far, if, if the council so desires to get that far into what's called an asset purchase agreement, there is a responsibility that the company does its own due diligence, there's a responsibility that we disclose everything that we possibly know, just like when you're selling a house. And so then, when you have your agreement lawyered up, as I would call it, you have representations and warranties, and you have limitations of those things. So often what, what could happen is a certain amount of your sale proceeds is held in escrow for a defined period of time, both parties have to agree that, yes, this fits the representation and warranties, disclaimers and disclosures, and then monies would be transferred out of there. So that's a long-winded answer to say, we would protect ourselves to a certain limit, have limits of liability.
And then help me with page twenty-six, technical approach criteria. Now, help me, because we do have a lot of wet weather plan, tell me about, talk to me about the wet weather plan development, because we do have a lot of, does that have anything to do with excessive rainfalls and things like that?
If you have infiltration, overflow events, things of that nature, we want to know what they're going to do to mitigate or end or remediate those problems here on the system.
And, and that's, tell me how that benefits our citizens as far as.
Well, quite frankly, when you have infiltration into a sanitary system, as we know, in, in a lot of older cities and towns, that is not, A, efficient, it costs more money, and it drives up rates overall, because they're treating surface water rather than wastewater. And so that's what we want to understand, we disclose all the deficiencies or the weaknesses of our system, disclose that, and then we want them to under, to demonstrate to us what they're going to do to change that and make that better.
And what do we, what happens to us now? How, how is that, that versus what we're doing now beneficial?
So I would have to defer to Brad or Phil on that, because they have the intimate knowledge of your system. I don't know if either, if Brad was here, am I, I'm putting you on the spot, sorry, Brad.
You know, one thing that maybe we should put in there, if you have a judge that wants to invest in the city and the land that they want to invest on doesn't have sewer access, what would you do to accommodate that business?
So under the economic development portion in section two, we would have those conversations and give that scenario, that if, if there were a piece of real estate that was slated or, or being prospected upon for economic development, we want to know what the, the potential new owner would do to help incite that, would they, now, keep in mind, under regulation, there are certain criteria that they can and can't perform, certain investments, but what happens is, and I'm getting really technical on you now, is a three-year revenue requirement, but we would, that the utility owner would want to have, meaning, will they, will they recoup their cost for putting an infrastructure in? So we would have that conversation in these interviews in the selection committee. One thing I just want to stress, y'all are in control of this. There's no rush to anything, I put an aggressive timeline in here, but this is all, all at your direction, and obviously with the, the administration, that we can slow this down and be very thoughtful about, let's, let's go get, let's go get responses, let's have these conversations. You know, I'm, I've been here every meeting since January, and that's part of my role, and just be very thoughtful on it, have community, I've, I've said this early on, have community education, town hall meetings, if you will. So again, I'm just suggesting that we can have those types of conversations in the course of this, this process.
Can you help me out with, with page thirty-one and the proposal ranking?
So, page thirty-one, section eighteen point five, so that's a relative weighting of evaluation criteria, we can change these however you'd like, but its qualifications is ten percent, technical approach, which is referred to earlier in the document, is forty percent, their business, the financial, and the cost proposal, meaning what are they, what, what are they going to pay us?
Yes.
For that, so those sum out to a hundred percent, so you have ten percent at qualifications, technical approach is forty percent, business and financial is ten percent, and cost is forty percent. Those are just, those are numbers that are, are not uncommon, have been in other projects, and if you want to change those, if you want to add to, it's entirely up to you.
Okay, that's, okay. So help me out as far as understanding the, the value, the, the, the value of the system. So if the value, does it, are we assuming that the value of the system is going down? Or can we assume that maybe the value of the system might go up, will that, the, the purchasing would, would take all that into consideration, as far as if, is, is there a possibility that the value of the system would actually be in our favor?
Would appreciate?
Yeah.
So that's what, largely what's your appraisal activity, it will, will, will ferret out, so we'll have that baseline. There are public disposition laws, meaning how you dispose of, dispose is kind of, is the legal term, but how you dispose of those properties and those assets, and so we're, we're bound by law, and I'll defer to Craig, because I'm not a lawyer, that can, that kind of prescribe how we do that. So one can argue, the longer that you own your system, perhaps it does depreciate in value, I'm not suggesting that, but the, without the, the proper capital improvements, that's what it could very well be.
And the cost of maintenance is going to go up? I mean, that's a given, the cost of maintenance of, of fixing those problems.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we've talked about this earlier, that at least one of our engineers has told us that we own a depreciating asset, it's going to go down as time goes, goes along. Is that your understanding?
Yes, I, that's the information I've received from your, your engineering firm of record, Wesley.
Okay.
Any other questions for Todd?
I actually have something I'd like to.
For Counselor me. Counselor me.
It doesn't matter, just an general question. First of all, I've been in the insurance industry forty-four years ago today, since I was saying that the day I started in the RFP. I have been writing personal lines insurance for thirty-two years. While it's great to hear all of this technology and all of these words that most of us citizens do not understand, everything is not being told properly when it comes to sewer failure. Most sewer, most of the tile sewer that runs at the beginning of your, at the beginning of your property line to your house, it usually fails about halfway in between, which means that if you don't have underground utility service insurance on your policy, you will pay twelve or thirteen thousand dollars out of your pocket. So what they're telling you, it's not going to eliminate you having an insurance claim of that nature, it's just going to shorten it from the main to your property line. So if the, if your main is on your property line, you still got to pay to the main. So just to educate people, I'm very passionate about educating all of my customers, a lot of you in this room are insured with me, and I just want the citizens to know that some of the information was not correct. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Todd concerning the RFP?
I think I agree with Todd, in the fact that maybe we need to look at the schedule, I mean, it's pretty aggressive. I don't know how to amend fourteen, section five, I mean, I, I don't know if we can leave that, but I know to advertise it, we need to have that sentence down.
Section five is the schedule, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page fourteen.
My hard copy.
Man, I also don't know if we're kind of stuck or bound to some, is the IURC only in session at certain periods, or anything like that?
No, the IURC is, by law, they have two hundred and ten days to issue an approved order once a petition is filed.
Okay.
And so once it's in their hands, it is out of our, basically our timeline control.
Okay, let's.
Section five.
But do we have an out within this?
Got it.
If we were to advertise this, do we have a clause in there that says we can adjust the schedule?
So in here, we, we can amend the schedule at any point in time, but if, if, if the council so desires, we can, we can make this a longer schedule if you'd like.
So if we move forward with this and put it out for the request for proposal, and what we find is it's not beneficial to the city, is there any cost to the city?
At that point, other than what you've got in it already, in, in, in professional services, it's not like you're going to pay a penalty to the proposers, they bear their cost, we bear our cost, and that's it. So if you get the responses back, and it's not responsive, then you reject all bids.
Okay.
I want to digress a minute, I, I, if I miss, if it, is it interpreted I misled anybody, that's, that wasn't the intent. It's my understanding today, chapter fifty, you're responsible from whatever your, your house to the main is.
But most of the failure happens nearer your house than it does at the main.
Understood, and I'm not here to say it, it does or does not, I'm not trying to mislead anybody, I'm just saying, for purposes of this, the limits of liability are stopping at the property line and not going across the street. So if you want a, a, a softer schedule, I can certainly do that, it's entirely up to you. If you want to, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
What was your reasoning for coming up with this fairly aggressive schedule?
I mirrored this after another project, it, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter one way or the other. I, I've been a part of a project that was advertised and put in the hands of the IURC within under twelve months, and I was recently a part of a project that took four years.
From what I understand, all we're doing tonight is voting yes or no for us to go forward and see if there's anybody interested. And if nobody interested, we tell them goodbye, we're done with it.
Correct, that's exactly right. You're not committing to a sale, you're not committing to anything, you're just wanting to have an objective process that says, we're considering this.
Can I ask a question? My name's Juliette, and I live at seventy-three South Seventh. How much additional fees will it cost us citizens for that to be done? To send out this RFP and get it back and review it and all that? We've already put out a large amount of money, how much more is it going to cost to send that out?
I guess it'd be a minimum of three thousand a month that we pay Todd, plus we have to give you thirty days notice, I'm, if I'm not misinformed on that.
Yeah, currently, I'm, the. Yeah, currently, I'm, the contracts expire because it went to the end of March, so I'm technically right in this moment, not under contract. So whatever professional service fees, I, I think we've, it's been held at a minimum to the extent that we've not brought in any additional lawyers. So I, I think I'm, I would be very sensitive to that. At this point in time, uh, it's, it's, the, the largest portion of the cost is, is borne by anybody that wants to respond to this. Fair question, but I think I can tell you that Mayor Buckley has been very sensitive to the cost that are associated with this.
I have a question. Are we, is there a, is there going to be down on this too?
Yeah, so I was, have been in contact.
Is that another cost?
It's, it's already been, I, I think it's already been considered before the council.
It's not in my 75,000, so it would be over and above that, whatever the cost of that would be.
So that, that works $9,500. I think the proposal has been submitted and, and spoken of publicly here.
They ran the cameras through all the sewers?
One of the exhibit, exhibit is the camera, and I think, Brad, it's, it's, I don't know when it was done, but yes.
But that probably should be done again, and that's more of an expense before we ever consider selling. I mean, that was 13 years ago.
Whatever professional services you engage in is going to cost money. Dave, for me or counsel?
Actually, for, for the mayor.
Okay.
Or for you. In the RFP, there's a heading that specifically says that this is vital to our long-term goals for the city. I wanted to know if you could share what the long-term goals for the city is.
The long-term goals for any city should be the police department and the fire department. Part of this proceeds of the sale of this utility would go to build a new police station. If you don't think we need a new police station, go out and take a look. Long time ago.
Mayor Buckley, are you still planning on putting the police station on the contaminated ground where the old tech?
It's not contaminated. It's been cleared by IDIM. And then, uh, in two, and then after that, we would construct a new fire station with another type of financing. But one of the purposes of the sale of this utility is to invest in our future. Our future is not pipe underground. Our future is the police department and the fire department. We need a new police station that has been outdated since the early 80s, early 90s, and that's what part of this proceeds is going to do. It's going to stabilize our police and fire for the next 25 years. And that is far more relevant than underground pipe.
Has the city council voted on that?
No. No, the city council has not voted. That's one, that's one of the reasons why we are doing this sale, other than a couple more. Number one is to stabilize our government.
Why wasn't it done before then? I mean, in all these years, why is it only being done now, seven months?
Could have done it two years ago.
We've been talking about it.
Why does no one know that? No one on my street knows about it. There's over 20 people, 20 residences. No one knows about it, except for me and two people that I've talked to. No one knows. If you want to do what your people want, you need to have your town meetings before you make this decision. Not, not before.
But we have talked about this openly. There's no secret. All of you have went through the police station. You know how bad it is. You know that it needs to be updated sooner than later. Mayor Wiley, he was the one who constructed that police station. It's the same police station with, with 15 officers that we now have 35 officers, plus a court.
Has it been remediated and dealt with?
No.
Nope. So the future of this city, in my opinion, is not the underground pipe. The future of this city is the police department and the fire department.
Mr. Broadwell, do you have a question?
Hey, if we proceed with, with, having given the appraisal, would that also include basically a comprehensive look? You know, so I'm assuming the company that wants to buy it is going to want to know what they're buying. As a side effect of that, then would we effectively have a good idea of what going forward our costs would be if we were to keep it?
Very possible.
Are there other side effects to come on that appraisal?
Very possible.
As a citizen of the city, I would like to ask our council people to vote no on this tonight and bring it for, bring it to the people publicly. Let them know what's going on and let us decide on that, instead of seven people deciding if we need to do this or not. I think the city should, the residents should be the ones allowed to decide this.
Is there any more questions on the RFP? If there's not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the RFP.
Mayor, if I may, if I may make a statement, um, one of the things I, I do agree that I've heard mentioned was bringing it before the public for a vote. I, I don't believe tonight's vote should be, but I believe before it was, be sold. I know one of the other counselors shared that, but that's a little far down the road. This is moving forward to see if anybody's even interested. I think a counselor over here summed it up in just an easy sentence. But I also just wanted to throw this out here while we're talking about this. I, I hope that the new police department doesn't just hinge upon the sale of this. We don't know what, we don't know where it's going to go. And if we're, I think if we say that this doesn't get us the money, we could never have a new police station. So I hope that we can not put our eggs in one basket. And one thing I wanted to say too, Mayor, there's been a lot brought up about the 1.5 and so on. That is a concern. But I'm hoping that as a city too, that even if we don't sell this, that we find a way to bring that number down. I made this comment before, when Mayor Wiley was the mayor, literally, I would have said, anyone who wants this can have it. First of all, it made, it made not one penny in revenue. It's changed since then, and it does make it a concern. So, uh, a long time ago, we could have handed this over to somebody, let them take the responsibility and so forth, but that ship has passed. I mean, now we have some, we're dependent upon the results either way. So I did want to say that, I don't know, others might agree too, but at the end of the day, when you look at a sale, I do think that maybe it's up to the council to, to maybe allow the public a referendum. Because I do hate, think if we were getting ready to sell something, I'm, I'm open-minded to this. I'm, I'm definitely opposed to a bad deal. I hope other counselors feel that. Sometimes I feel like it doesn't matter what we do, we're, we're going to sell it. And I'm not there. I believe I'm open-minded on it. I believe also, just want to make a quick comment, that I think, Todd, you've done a, a good job in how you've handled this. You've been fair, you've been honest, and been a good choice, and that's all I have.
I'd like to add to that and say I, I pretty much agree with Counselor Templeton. I think we've come far enough. We need to find out what we're dealing with. But as far as a sale, I think we would need to let the citizens have more say. So I, I would say that we've come far enough, we want to find out what we're dealing with. But if it came down to selling, then we would, we would have to do something more with the citizen.
I agree. You, you vote, you voted in January to hire Conrad Consulting, Todd Bertrand, to develop an RFP for two reasons. One, you wanted to see if anybody is interested in buying this utility. And number two, if there is, what are they willing to pay the city to buy the utility? That's it. And we talked about it in January. If there's no buyers, and there's going to be, if there's no buyers, it stops. If the people come forward and they sit there and they talk to you, and they, this is what we offer, and it's not acceptable, then it ends. That's all that we're doing here. We're not selling the utility tonight, but I'm going to reaffirm what I've told you just a minute ago, and every one of you have been through that building. Our future is not underground pipe. Our future is the Beach Grove Police Department and the Beach Grove Fire Department, and the personal safety of everybody that lives in this city. That's our, that's our priority, and that's how it should be voted on. All right, anything else? Motion to approve the RFP.
I'll make said motion to approve the RFP.
I'll second.
Second, we'll do voice individually, starting with Chris.
Aye.
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 Motion to, to approve advertising the RFP for interested companies to bid.
I'll make said motion to approve advertising of the RFP.
I'll second.
We'll start on my right. Chris?
Aye.
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 All right. That concludes new business. We have no other business to discuss this evening. Counsel comments on my left. Buddy?
Uh, I have no comments. Thank everybody for being here. I guess I should say that.
What'd you say, no comment?
I appreciate everybody being here, and I do agree that if there is any type of talk about selling, I think it should go to a referendum. Thank you.
Appreciate everyone being here, and, um, we do listen to the comments. We'll see what happens. We'll go from here.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Thank you for all the citizen comments, and I believe we should move forward and not backward.
Thank you for all of your comments. Thank you for coming forward and talking and telling us how you feel. That's all I have.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned. Dan, I don't know what time.
8:12. 8:12.